Councilmember Toby Ely is in charge of the prayer and the pledge.
Thank you Vice Mayor, would you bow with me please? Dear God, our most loving heavenly father, we thank you so much for this wonderful day that we have and this wonderful city in which we live. Dear father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us. Tonight as we make decisions for our community, let us do so with your wisdom and you in our heart. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council meeting, May the 13th, 2010. Councilmembers, the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda, and you've had time to look that over, and if you have any questions, we will listen to those at this time, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Colorado Miss Rock.
Mr. Ely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Councilmembers, before we get started, I'd like to, we have some special guests here with us tonight, I would like to recognize them at this time if I could. We have some Boy Scout troop 362, looks like it's Zach Vandewer and Kate Hunter, Kate Hunter, is that right? And we also have the scoutmaster Eric Longdecker, is that right? Okay, trying to read Georgia's handwriting here.
Don't you read that on there.
And I'm trying to, let's see, and I also have Ben Burgen and Grant Bell and Zach Vandewer. They're here for their citizen and the community badge. Welcome, and we're glad you're here, we hope you enjoy yourself. Next, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to amend approximately 13.5 acres in the Garrison Cove, Section 5, Planned Unit Development, PUD District, by deleting multifamily residential lots and to delete approximately 7.5 acres located north of Wilford Boulevard and south of Higgins Lane from said Planned Unit Development, PUD District, and to rezonate to Residential Multifamily 12, RM 12 District. Move for passage on third reading. Second. Motion in a second, Colorado Miss Rock.
Mr. Ely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, we have several public hearings tonight, and the first one is pursuant to Resolution 10-OZ-R-13 adopted by the City Council on April the 15th, 2010. We are to conduct a public hearing to consider amending the Stratford Hall, Phase 5 PRD, for 9.8 acres located along Charleston Boulevard, east of Old Las Casas Highway, Main Street Homes LLC is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the April the 25th, 2010 issue of our local newspaper. Welcome to City.
Thank you, good evening Vice Mayor, and good evening council members. This first public hearing this evening is to consider a PRD zone amendment. As you're aware, PRD stands for Planned Residential District, and with the Planned Residential Zone, a specific plan is approved for property. If the developer wants to make any substantial changes to that specific plan, the developer must go through the rezoning process again and get your approval. So the situation we have tonight is, the developer would like to make some changes to the Stratford Hall, Section 5 PRD. And if you direct your attention to the map, you'll see that the area shaded orange and the area shaded blue is all part of the Stratford Hall. But the only portion of this map that's on the screen that is, that the developer's requesting to change is the area shaded blue, and that is a smaller portion of the entire property. That blue area, the current plan for that area permits eight two-unit structures, or I mean, I'm sorry, it permits 21 single-family structures, four four-unit structures, and one six-unit structure for a total density of 43 units in that blue area. The applicant is requesting to amend that, to continue allowing those 21 single-family structures, but rather than doing the four-four unit structures and the one-six unit structure, replace that with eight two-unit structures. So it would be houses that are, just two houses that are attached at a time. That would result in overall density decrease from a total of 43 units to 35 units. The setback would remain the same, these will continue to be rear alley-loaded products, and the product type that the applicant is requesting is a product type that's currently being used in the development. They refer to this as the garden home. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this PRD amendment. Mr. Bland Trolinger is here this evening, if you have any questions, he doesn't have a presentation on the matter, but if you have any questions either before or after the public hearing, he'd be glad to answer them. Staff's available for any questions you may have, and I did mention, I think, that Planning Commission did recommend approval unanimously the night of the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Councilmembers, are there any questions to Ms. Ely or the staff before we open the public hearing?
Ms. Ely, how many units in the new proposal?
There will be 35 total for this area, rather than the 43 which is currently approved, so it will be a decrease.
21 singles and 16?
And eight two-units, so that would be 16.
Yeah, that's 37.
Let's look at this letter in the program book. Well, he said that his maximum density is going to be 35 units in the program book, so the maximum density allowed would be 35 units, we won't allow 37. So we'll just have to decrease one of those two units to 35, right Mr. Trolinger? He's nodding his head in agreement. 35 is the maximum number of units.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Any other questions to Ms. Ely or the staff before we open the public hearing? Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone here wishing to speak for or against this matter, if you would, please come to the podium, give us your name and Anyone wishing to speak for or against? CNN 01, I'll close the public hearing. Consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to amend Stratford Hall, Phase 5 PRD, located along Charleston Boulevard, east of Old Las Casas Highway.
Vice Mayor, during the Planning Commission, the applicant had, I think, made numerous presentations to the neighbors out there, and I think they feel very comfortable with this. They, anytime someone changes something in the existing neighborhood, it sends up flags, but I think the applicant did a good job in letting the neighbors out there know what the changes would be. And as you can see tonight, I don't think anybody's here to...
It's actually a decrease in the...
It's a decrease in the density from what it was before that.
Is that a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Do I hear... Move for passage on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Colorado Miss Rock.
Mr. Ely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, I'm pursuant to Resolution 10-OZ-R-14 adopted by the City Council on April the 15th, 2010. We are to conduct a public hearing to consider amending the West Lawn, PUD, for 206.75 acres located along west of Veterans Parkway, Hollob Development is the applicant, and a notice of the said public hearing was published in the April the 25th, 2010 issue of our local newspaper. Welcome again, Ms. Ely.
Thank you very much. This next public hearing is for property which is referred to as the West Lawn Development. West Lawn is Zoned PUD, Planned Unit District, and it is a mixed-use development. As a part of this PUD, there's areas that are zoned for commercial uses, there's areas that are zoned for multifamily residential uses, and there's areas that will be permitted to have single-family structures. The property is located just north of Shores Road, and Veterans Parkway goes right through the property. And State Route 840 is just to the north, as you can see on the map on the screen, the property is approximately 206.75 acres. The applicant, this request is similar to a previous request in that the applicant would like to make some changes to the planned developments. The changes we would consider to be substantial, so they have to go through the legislative process and see you and get your approval before they can move forward. The changes that the applicant's proposing to make to this PUD only deal with the existing single-family residential development portion of this program book. You've got a rather large program book, including your agenda materials, but the primary changes can be found on pages 38, 39, 40, and 41. Basically, they deal with the setback and architectural requirements for the single-family portion of this development. The applicant has found a builder interested in moving forward with the single-family portion of this project, and if you drove past it, you could see that there's some roads that are on the property, and there's some infrastructure in place, but there's been no development since 2008. They've found somebody interested in moving forward with that single-family portion, however, their product type is different than what was previously approved. Alan Thompson's going to get up after me, and he'd like to give you a presentation on what the specifics are for this proposed change. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this PUD amendment, and that recommendation was unanimous the evening of the public hearing. If you have questions from staff, either before or after public hearing, I'll be glad to answer them for you, but at this moment, if you will, let him, Mr. Thompson, would like to give you a pretty short presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Are there any questions to Ms. Ely or the staff? Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson, we're ready for your presentation.
Good evening Vice Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the time tonight, I'm Alan Thompson with Reagan Smith here on behalf of our client, Hollob Investments. The adjustments we made to this Planned Unit Development are very minor, however, being such a thick book, I want to be very clear on these adjustments that we did make, and answering any questions that you all may have. This is just showing you the approved master plan that was approved with the initial zoning, and then we're going into the pages here. This is page 39, the only adjustment, if you look up at the far right corner, we did add the ability to have a side-loaded garage on a corner lot. We would still have to meet a 35-foot setback on that garage, even though it's side-loaded, in order to accommodate four cars in the driveway space. That's the only adjustment to that particular page. This is page 39, and this is where more of the adjustments occur. One thing that we've done here is we've requested that front yard setback be made a 15-foot. We've changed both our side yard setbacks to five-foot, they were previously seven-and-three, but codes requested that be five, so we made that adjustment. The rear yard setback is 20-foot with the exception of the option that we've added on this page, it's the detached garage option, and that is where we have a five-foot rear yard setback. That's for the garage only. Your home would still have to meet a 20-foot setback in this particular situation, and if for some reason there is a conflict with a utility and drain adjustment in that particular backyard as well, the structure will obviously have to adjust for that. And to give you an idea of this particular layout, this is what we'd be looking at, and the option of adding the detached garage, we're still front-loaded, however, the garage is removed to the rear of the house, the driveway comes in immediately to the side. And this is reflected on page 39, we'll go back to here, and that is the 63-foot wide lot. One other adjustment we did make from a setback standpoint is we requested setback change in the garage setback from 40 to 35. We feel like we still accommodate the appropriate parking in the driveway here, that additional five-foot in the backyard makes this better in terms, from our standpoint, from a quality of life, getting a little bigger backyard for this particular product, and allows it to be more marketable. Going on to the next page, which is sheet 40. Sheet 40 is pretty much identical changes, it's just a different lot size going to a 60-foot lot. And again, we added the exact same changes in terms of setbacks, in terms of garage setback, in terms of the detached garage option, just a five-foot rear setback, and this gives you an example of what that would be. The only difference is the width of your lot, which would be a 60-foot wide lot. And the additional elevations that you see, there's one, if you're coming from the left over, the second house was an additional facade we added, and then the very last house was an additional facade we added on that page. And then if we go back to page 39, the far-right house on that particular page was additional facade. We did not change any of the requirements in terms of the percentage of masonry or anything else that was established in the initial zoning. All we did was add these particular images to show the different types of facades that could be added with this particular detached garage option. And then the very last page is the alley-loaded product, and in this particular case, the detached garage would basically be flipped and you'd be accessing from alley-side. So it would still work with this particular approach as well. But that's the only adjustments that's been made to this book, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, are there any questions to Mr. Thompson before we open the public hearing? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open the public hearing and ask anyone here wishing to speak for or against this particular item, please come to the podium, give us your name and Anyone? Not? I'll close the public hearing. Consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to amend the West Lawn, PUD, located Move for passage on first reading. Have a motion in a second, any other questions before we call the row? Colorado Miss Rock.
Mr. Ely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, pursuant to Resolution 10-OZ-R-15 adopted by the City Council on April the 15th, 2010. We are to conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 1.5 acres located south of Old Fort Parkway and west of St. Andrews Drive from CL and RS15 to CH. Autumn Wood Place Partnership is the applicant, and a notice of the said public hearing was published in the April the 25th, 2010 issue of our local newspaper. Ms. Ely?
Thank you again. This public hearing is the first of two public hearings regarding property which we've been referring to as Autumn Wood. And for those of us who have watched this or attended the public hearing at the Planning Commission level, I'd like to point out, during Planning Commission, we had one public hearing to consider zoning this 1.5 acres to CH, and during that same public hearing, we considered zoning the southern properties to PRD. Tonight, we're having two separate public hearings, so just to be clear, this first public hearing is only to consider rezoning the 1.5 acres from its current CL, Local Commercial District, and RS15 Zone's Single Family Residential District, to CH, which is Highway Commercial District. I would like to point out that an additional portion of land on the western side of the property has been reserved for a right-of-way so that you can access the property to the south. This property is located just south of Old Fort Parkway and west of St. Andrews Drive. The property to the east and north is Zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. The adjacent property on the west is the Town and Country Apartments, and those are Zoned RS15, and just west of those are properties Zoned CH. This property is currently vacant and undeveloped, and the applicant initially had requested a PCD zone for this property, and reviewing our guidelines for planned developments, we realized that they shouldn't ask for a PCD zone if their plan was vague, and at that time, they had a very vague plan, they just wanted to make sure to have a commercial out parcel. So to remedy that solution, they requested to be Zoned CH, Highway Commercial District, like the adjacent properties. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning request unanimously. Kevin Gunther is here for any questions you may have about this request. The City Council should conduct a public hearing after or before which, the staff will be able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to Ms. Ely before we open the public hearing? CNN, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open the public hearing, and I'd like to ask anyone here wishing to speak for or against this particular item, please come to the podium, give us your name and address.
Hello Vice Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Teri O'Banion, I live at 3532 Quaker Court. More of what I have to say is about the second part of the hearing, so I'm speaking to you now strictly to tie those two together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? This is for the 1.5 acre tract. CNN 01, this time I'll close the public hearing. Consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezonate an area located along Old Fort Parkway and west of St. Andrews Drive to CH. Look for approval. Second. Motion in a second, Colorado Miss Rock.
Mr. Ely.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye. Next, pursuant to Resolution 10-OZ-R-16 adopted by the City Council on April the 15th, 2010. We are to conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 16.77 acres located south of Old Fort Parkway and west of St. Andrews Drive from RS15, RS12, and CF to PRD. Autumn Wood's Place Partnership is the applicant, and a notice of the said public hearing was published in the April the 25th, 2010 issue of our local newspaper. Ms. Ely?
Thank you again. This request is the second portion of the request that the Planning Commission considered in April. This is to rezonate approximately five acres from RS15, which is Single Family Residential District, CF, which is Commercial Fringe District, and RS12 to PRD, Planned Residential District. As a planned development, applicants require to submit a specific plan to you, and that specific plan becomes a zoning, you should have in your agenda materials a program book titled Autumn Wood Place, and in this program book are the guidelines, the specifications that this property, that the zoning will apply to this property. The Planning Commission had initially considered this rezoning request in May 2009. The item was deferred because there were some questions about ownership of the narrow strip of property that you may be able to see on your map. The strip is adjacent to Town and Country Apartments. The applicant has resolved that ownership question. The applicant has also resolved access to the Town and Country Apartments by providing a right-of-way going from Old Fort Parkway south to the property to Autumn Wood. The properties are approximately 16.77 acres, and the request is to allow 288 multifamily apartment units for overall density of 17.17 fueling units per acre. The apartments will have access from both St. Andrews Drive and from Old Fort Parkway. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning request unanimously. Kevin Gunther is here, and I believe he has a presentation for you regarding this matter. If you have questions about the zoning request, either after Mr. Gunther's presentation or after public hearing, staff will be glad to answer those questions. Mr. Gunther?
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Any questions to Ms. Ely or the staff before this presentation? The presentation may answer some questions, so I... Mr. Gunner, we can go ahead with your presentation this time, please.
Thank you Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, thank you staff for your presentation. My name is Kevin Gunther with Design Resource, I'm working in collaboration with Hudson Steel. And I do want to mention that Mr. Elliott and Mr. Ray are also here this evening if you have questions directly to the applicant. This is a slide of the master plan, the illustrative master plan. We've been working on this project for some time, and because it is a planned development, what that's allowed us to do along with staff and suggestions from Planning Commission is to make sure that we give the city an end product that with the planned development gives you some assurances in the design issues of the site. One of the important issues that has come up has been access and egress, and what we've done is make sure that we have good access off St. Andrews Drive as well as Highway 96. By allowing for that public right-of-way that Ms. Ely had mentioned, west of the commercial, we've given access not only to our parcel, but also the commercial parcel that we're creating and the existing parcel to the west. We also wanted to make sure that pedestrian linkages were provided on-site, and with this plan, you're seeing the details of those linkages as well as the placement of the buildings. There's over 53% open space that we're committing to with the plan, and there's a high level of amenities that are also being committed with the plan, such as a volleyball court, a playground, a large pool and clubhouse area, and several pocket parks. We also wanted to make sure to present to the city an architecture that was going to be compatible with the area and express the quality that we hope that you see. We've committed to the cementitious boards as well as brick and stone on the majority of the facades, and we've taken an approach with the architecture where it's what I call 360-degree architecture. We've taken that facade and applied that same level of materials and detail to all sides of the building so that no matter what side you're approaching, you see that quality And in the last slide I'm showing here is just a picture of some of the amenities that we're committing to. These are amenities that the developer and some of the architecture that has happened on other sites, just to show you the type of pool and clubhouse and the quality level that they're committing to. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and as I said, Mr. Ray and Mr. Elliott are also here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gunner. Are there any questions, Mr. Young?
Mr. Gunther, refresh my memory, what's on St. Patrick's Court? Is that undeveloped or...?
There is a commercial development on St. Patrick's Court. On the other side, there's some egress to the parking lot, so those commercial developments, I believe, are retail strip where it gets closer to St. Andrews, and then there's an...
I think it's the Social Security office, I believe.
Okay, yes.
All right. Now, I got three questions. Was there any room for a turn-in lane going into this development on St. Andrews, or was that, did we...
I don't believe that was ever brought up as a concern to this point.
All right, and then tell me about the gate coming in from the commercial highway section.
Right, well, we have, it is a gated development, and we have a large turnaround in front of both gates, both off Highway 96 and St. Andrews, that would permit emergency vehicles to come in, do a full turning movement, and then there's, basically, that gate will have a, there's two ways you'll be able to enter, either with a pass code, which works well for the residents because they can simply go through the gate, that prevents things backing up, or in a case where they don't have a pass code, they'll have a numeric code they can type into the pad. So that gate will be, in both cases, well beyond where that large circular turnaround is. Does that answer your questions, Mr. Young?
Well, I wanted to know if they would have access through the back end with a pass code or a key point, so the answer is yes.
Yes.
Any other questions to Mr. Gunner? Thank you, sir. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone here wishing to speak for or against, if you would, please come to the podium, give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Gina Murphy. I have lived at 106 Haverford Court for 12 years. I am no public speaker, as you can tell, but I think the zoning change request is important enough for me to try to address my concerns. I lived in Nashville for 29 years before moving to Murfreesboro. Part of the reason was to get away from the growing crime rate and traffic congestion. My neighbors and I have much invested in our homes, which we do not want to lose. Right now, we have a safe and quiet community with homeowners who take pride in the neighborhood. If you allow the proposed building of the high-rise apartment complex, we will have increased traffic, our property values will drop, crime will move into our area, and everything we have worked so hard for will be lost. Renters do not invest either their time or money into anything permanent. They may stay for a few months or maybe even a year, but then they are gone. Homeowners have roots, we have a lot of money and time invested in the area. We do not want this apartment complex in our backyard, would you? I ask the Planning Commission to do the right thing and vote against rezoning PRD.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Clinton Irvin. I live at 3540 Quaker Court. I'm against the rezoning. According to records of the Murfreesboro Police Department, apartments bring with them an increase in crimes such as burglary, domestic assaults, breaking and entering, automobile vandalism, car theft, and not just within the confines of the apartment complex themselves, but in the surrounding area. I'm concerned with the drainage. It's a watershed area, and I'm sure in light of recent events, those concerns should be considered. I'm concerned with the strain on infrastructure. With no change in infrastructure, a drastic increase in population reduces the quality of life in the area. The Casey Lane, St. Andrews area already is crowded, and I believe the infrastructure would be negatively impacted with this. It simply hasn't been considered, in my opinion. In summation, I would simply like the area to be, to continue to be single-family homes. As my neighbor has mentioned, homeowners care about their community, they invest in their community, they're interested in quality of life. We have lots of children in the area, they already have problems with traffic. I'm just concerned that this is going down the wrong road, and I urge you to vote against the measure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Irvin. Are there others that would like to speak for or against?
Hello, my name is Terry O'Gannon. I'm a resident of 3532 Quaker Court for the past 10 years. When my husband and I decided to move to Murfreesboro, the reason that we selected a home in the area where we currently reside is because there was a buffer between us and urban sprawl, so to speak. We took the zoning as a single-family residential as a promise that in the future, we would be protected and have like-minded citizens living near us, single-family homes. We'd welcome those in the neighborhood, that would be great. It is a little concerning that only four homes in our neighborhood were made aware and given notice of the change to planning. Those homes, I believe, are within 250 feet. However, apartments, they affect much greater area than 250 feet. I believe the location is poorly chosen because three-story buildings within a few yards of a neighborhood's backyards is not preferable, and it's not a place that a current homeowner is going to want to stay in. Also, it looks to me like from the planning that if there's a possibility of landlocked some of the existing citizens in, if they were to try to decide to build a residential area, for instance, if something else residential came in, there's no way to access it if we allow the rezoning. I'm against the high-density culture that would be brought into our neighborhood within 500 yards of our homes. I think that the apartments would create a strain on our local resources. We would see no increase in property taxes, but yet we would see an increase in the burden of the roads, the school system. We're going to see a definite immediate increase in noise levels and domestic issues that would require firemen, police, and paramedic resources. Also, the area where we live is below a watershed. I'm not an expert on this type of thing, but I do know from living there that this property drains onto our land, so any rays and general grade of that land is going to negatively affect the homeowners in the immediate area. During the recent rains, we basically had a raging creek running through our neighborhood, and the water was coming from that property. I believe that the traffic that increased would create a burden on our local streets that are adjacent to that. Increased of car and foot traffic, I think is pretty much going to be a given. The services in the neighborhood, cable, television, et cetera, are already inadequate and overburdened, and the electricity in the area routinely fails, so I can't see that putting more strain on these resources would be in our benefit. Basically, I'd like to ask you to vote not to vote against for this, and ask you that if this was a change that you would approve of, if your home's value, your quality of life, and your safety would stood to change because of a change in existing law. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Jones. I live at 3540 Quaker Court. These are some of my neighbors. Shamefully, I didn't know that they were my neighbors until recently. I did not receive a notice. I live within the area, didn't receive a notice. I've contacted the proposed builder 27 times. All calls are recorded, never an answer back. I had the opportunity that was pretty profound. I got to get out, take a few hours off of work, which we all need to do, right? Learn my brother pleasure a little bit, took my dog for a walk. Anybody that knows me knows I love my dogs pretty much as much as I love my husband. And I got to meet every single one of my neighbors. Shamefully, the part that I mentioned, I didn't know that they're all my neighbors. So something fantastic came out of this. I got a petition, 100% participation on my street, that does not want apartments in our backyard. Then we went out on the Franklin Heights. We got four participants in five minutes to sign our petition. We had to stop because it was dangerous because of oncoming traffic, and it was getting a little bit late, and we needed to come to see you guys. So I think what God was telling me to do was get out and meet my neighbors. I meant that we have one that suffers from Alzheimer's disease, and that maybe I need to be a better neighbor and go talk to her a little more often and see what her needs are. I got to meet some pretty great people. I got to meet some great dogs. Everything, hopefully, will work out just fine. Now, when I bought my house on Quaker Court, as you can tell, I strained for a southern accent. I'm not from here. I have been told, though, that in a month, I'll be here half of my life, and I have to start saying I'm from here. That evidently is a rule. So although I'm trying to become a UT fan, already a Murfreesboro fan, because I chose this house over my house in Brentwood that was twice the size. Forty-three houses in two and a half days drove my real estate agent nuts. I was the worst client you can have. I had a list, we don't alter from the list, houses started combining, confusion started. I wanted this house because children were playing in the street in January after a very light snow. The house had some problems. It was painted Pepto-Bismol pink on the inside, and I thought, my God, what are you thinking? But it had all this great potential because of what it had around it. It had new schools, it had Murfreesboro, it had Rutherford County, and I wanted something a little less dense than where I was. The children playing in the street is what really got my attention, started knocking on doors. I wanted to know if that was normal, if it was a safe place. Then there's seven years, and I've never thought twice about it. It was the best decision. We've watched a lot of growth, we're having issues with annexation. I come from a megalopolis, I'm rather proud of it, and everyone wants growth. We want education, we want culture, we want community, we want football, we want libraries and museums. I don't want three stories peering down in my backyard because I know facts, because I came from big places. Unruly growth does not help a community. It may help today because it's going to add a few dollars of income. This apartment complex will be sold at some point to a management firm. It will turn into a lower income. It will constitute crime. I know this because I did research, as I'm sure that you did also, before you would approve such an act. 20% increase in crime to the homeowners outside of this apartment complex. That apartment complex will give absolute accessibility for somebody who is committing a crime to run. I know this because it's happened to me not once, but twice. $800,000 home, apartments within 300 feet, four stories high, 400 units. Every house on my street was broken into, not once, but more than twice before I left. If you've ever had that happen to you, you like to think you're strong, you can live through it, you're insured, it's damages, your children are safe, your dog is fine, everything was okay. It's not. You don't sleep. Somebody was in your house rifling through your things, they violated you. As you can probably guess, you don't want that happening to your kid, and it happened to my dad's kid. I moved to Tennessee, that was rather hard for a little girl from San Francisco. You guys are a little scary, but you're nice, and you were intelligent, and it was great to be around you, and I still think I'd wear a size 10 if I would've stayed at home, because I learned all about biscuits and gravy and how they merged together perfectly. And I wasn't raised on that, and man, it's good. If I can just get past the Tennessee heat, this is a perfect place. You add a shoreline, everyone would want to live here. I love it here, or I wanted to stay. And it's very frightening to me that it happened to me when I lived in California. The house I grew up in was broken into, beautiful home. My dad worked graveyard for Pan Am, he was home. Bought my first house in Tennessee, it's in my twenties, coming from San Francisco, that's not possible. Nobody has that kind of money. I lived in Hermitage, beautiful place. I was so proud, maybe too much so. Farmer behind me died. Four-story apartments, my house was broken into in the first three months. I couldn't sell it fast enough. I moved out to the country because I figured the only way I'd be safe is if I surrounded myself with land. Then to Brentwood, then Murfreesboro. I want the children to continue playing in the street. I want the people who are half of our community on Quaker Court, half of the people that signed this position are over the age of 60. I want them to feel safe. I want to continue to mow their yard when they can. I don't want them afraid of crime. I don't want their property values lowered because for half of us, it's our investment, it's all we have. And we take such pride, if you ever had the opportunity to drive down Quaker Court, the gardening is beautiful, and the people are friendly, and it's kind of nice to be told by the local kids, you know, your house is the safe house, and your house always smells like cookies. That's kind of cool. And I'm afraid that's not going to be that way anymore. And the last thing I'd like to say is that when I moved to Murfreesboro, I had to pray a lot about it, mostly because I was told I didn't pronounce names in the city correctly. And my husband still corrects me on that every once in a while. But I made a promise to you guys. I made a promise I'd be a good citizen, always, that I'd be trustworthy, and to quote the Boy Scouts, loyal also. And the city of Murfreesboro made a promise to me, because when I was looking at the multiple plaques on that property, I wanted to build a three-car garage, and I cannot do that because it would be a violation of the current existing plan on my house, and I wasn't going to do that to my neighbors, to put a great big huge building, drop dead in the center of my half-acre lot. Because it's not exactly fair to the three houses that surround me, because my conscience wouldn't let me do it, although I probably could. And what I learned as a little girl is just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should. And I'd like to see a really nice community go on that 17 acres that has single-family homes valued similar to mine, and then those kids, those people that buy those homes, their kids can go to school with my kids and hopefully my grandkids someday, and everyone's playing nice together, and not 700 to 800 people that maybe will stay there for a little while and make an investment, or maybe not. So I'm kind of hoping that the city of Murfreesboro will keep their promise to me, because my plaque says "single-family homes." It doesn't say apartments, and it doesn't say strip malls. It says "a community," and apartments and single-family doesn't equal community. And I'd really like to have a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Do you want to copy my little petition? It's a little...
Are there others wishing to speak for or against?
My name is Kevin Gunther. Of course, I did the initial presentation on behalf of the developer, and I did want to at least address some of the issues that were brought up, as far as I can do that, as it relates to the design of our plan. I do understand the concerns that were brought up tonight, and I know that those are real concerns. One of the things that the developer has done with this plan development is not just brought to you an application for strictly apartments and just said, I'm going to build apartments, and I'm not going to tell you how they're going to look, or what type of quality they're going to be, or what type of amenities. He's promised as well, he's made a promise to certain things that are very expensive. They are an investment in community, just like single-family homes are an investment in community. And with this application, what we're asking for is that diversity, opportunity in housing, but not necessarily saying that this wouldn't be valuable housing. This is something that we're committing a strong amount of value to, both in the quality of the architecture, as I said, more than 50% open space. We've got buffers on all sides of the property that we've committed to with type-C landscape, which is the highest-quality landscape you can ask for with a buffer, and we've got distances that exceed what would normally be required. Part of the thing, you know, I heard a couple comments about three stories. One of the things that we have been able to do with that three-story building is actually pull it away from the property lines, and with the plan development, give you a commitment of distances greater than, once again, if we were just to come to you and say, this is straight apartment zoning, and would have allowed us to get closer to the single families that are there. And we've put things in like playgrounds, pools, pocket parks, because the people that live here in the apartments want to experience that same quality of life, just as you have. So I just wanted to make note of those things, and as I said, we are here to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? CNN 01, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Next, we consider for passage on first reading orders to rezonate an area located along Old Fort Parkway and west of St. Andrews Drive to PRD.
Let me make some comments, Vice Mayor. This property actually backs up to Milton-Salem Electric, and we've been out there for 10 years, and I would love for it to stay the same. When we first went out there, the deal was running across the road, and we were the only thing out there, but we always knew it would not stay the same. Even though I don't really particularly care for apartments right behind our gas tank, it's a fact of life. And all of that area out there, if it's correctly from wrong, from Deerfield, Gresham Lane, Meadowlong, and Buckland Lane is under consideration for annexation, including Franklin Heights. So, you know, it's kind of high in the sky thinking that things are not going to change around it in a growing community like this, when you're less than a mile, mile twenty-four. So I thought I'd want to make those comments. I would love for it to stay right behind me just the way it is, but I always knew it was not going to be the same. So you move here, everything is nice and friendly, but in a growing community, it's just not going to stay there. If you want to think it's going to stay that way, move to Christiana or Hoopas Gap or somewhere like that, but not when you, a mile, a half a mile, or less than a mile, mile twenty-four, not going to happen. It's not realistic.
Mr. Gunther, let's go to page five, please. The sliver of RS 15 that runs to the left of this property, looking at it, the partial on the other side of that, it says CF. Is that... The parcel on the other side of that, it says CH, is that Commercial Highway?
Yes, sir.
And the parcel next to it is also zoned Commercial Highway?
Yes.
And if I'm reading this correctly, both of these parcels back up to Quaker Court?
That is correct.
So Commercial Highway Zone, the most intensive zone that we have, already backs up to Quaker Court? Is that, am I reading this correctly?
Yes, this is the zoning map as provided by the city, so that would be the information we had in the application that would, you know, we perhaps could verify that, yes.
Is that parcel, are they vacant now at this time?
Yes. I believe there are some buildings on those. Yes, if you go to page six, it'll show you the one closest to the RS-15 strip that you described does have some outbuildings and so forth, but the other one is currently vacant. But neither one of them are developed to the CH capacity that they could hold.
The point I'm making is, the neighbors make some good points, but do they realize that the Commercial Highway Zone today backs up to their houses? I don't think so. So this apartment complex, designed and promised by the applicant, would be built exactly the way it is intended to be built in this presentation? Or if it wasn't, we would stop the process, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. But with a blanket Commercial Highway Zone, there would be more leeway for a developer to build many things in that, that would, could and would affect the neighborhood more than this apartment complex?
Yes, and what we've tried to do is give you, as you mentioned, very specifics about what we're promising, or the applicant is promising. And with those Commercial Highway Zones, at this point, that type of promise is not necessarily guaranteed.
But this plan will be built to this plan?
Correct, that's why it's a plan development.
Ms. Harris, you have one?
No.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, the public hearing is already closed. Any questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Gunther.
I have a couple more questions. Ms. Ada Lot, or Ms. Ely, whoever, I'm sorry. Was there any reported floodage, is that a correct term, floodage, during this last area in this proposed area that was reported?
If there was any, I'm not aware of it. There is a very substantial ditch between those two cul-de-sacs of Quaker Court and Haverford. If you would examine the plan on page five, you can see the area that's shown as RS-12, that is a detention area for the development along St. Andrews already. That's what that was, is already functioning as. And it overflows down that ditch, which heads towards Puckett Creek to the west. We are aware of that drainage ditch. Actually, it's my understanding that there's not been any house flooding, although I'm very certain people in that subdivision had water in their yards. That area, I'm not as aware of flooding problems with water into the houses, as there are some areas to the south in the same subdivision. Quite a bit to the south has had some problems historically. I will add something you didn't ask, but I want to tell you, that area that's currently shown as RS-12, there are no buildings in that area, because they're going to maintain it as a detention area, it's going to remain as open space. And that was something that, as a staff member, I felt attractive about this plan. Rather than putting buildings up against the property line, up against these people's backyards on Quaker Court and Haverford, they'd be putting in a large detention area. They'll be vegetated, they'll be landscaped, they'll actually have a buffer along the property line to help the visual part of it. And it helps with the separation of the parking areas, and helps with the separation of the buildings from their backyards. And that's something that actually I insisted that they do, but it was easy to accomplish in this plan because of the detention area.
Any other questions, Ms. Ada Lot?
Mr. Young and members of the council, while I'm standing here before I step down, I want to point out that a large portion, perhaps a little bit over half of the site, is already zoned Commercial Fringe. And that would be the part that fronts over on St. Andrews. Tomorrow, someone could come in with a site plan for a commercial development. We don't know what shape it could take. It could be a strip center, it could be an office building, it could be many of the things that permit in the Commercial Fringe. They would have to go through our planning process, we pay attention to the drains, but that's already entitled in terms of zoning. There is uncertainty of what form it would be exactly. But the planning commission would review those plans, and if it were properly done, it would be approved. The attractive thing about this plan is that it does create buffers that we can describe, it does create an arrangement that we can describe, and it creates a known user with a known approach to how it's being developed. It takes the uncertainty out of it. And again, rather than having buildings backing up to these people's yards, we have brought to you a plan that does not incorporate that. It keeps a green space behind these people. It gives them a buffer. I often tell people, "The best buffer is distance. It's not a row of trees." The best buffer is distance. And this plan brings that type of buffer.
Thank you, Ms. Ada Lot. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Harris?
If I'm reading this correctly, the area in question, three-fourths of this area is already zoned Commercial, is that correct?
Approximately, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilli?
Ms. Ada Lot, the strip that sort of divides the neighborhood, on the other side of this, this RS-12 piece, and then RS-15, the two yellow strips that run parallel in between the neighborhood and the proposed development? If those could be developed in single-family lots, how many houses would those two pieces
It's difficult to say, but I would say, we're looking at probably about 24, 25 lots. And that would be depending upon things like the storm drainage, how much room they'd have to set aside for that, how much street, how wide their street would be. But 24 would probably be about a reasonable number.
So approximately enough land to equate to 24 single-family homes is buffering in between the established neighborhoods and the property that's in question for the apartment complex, is that correct?
I may have misunderstood you.
I'm looking at those two yellow strips.
And within?
The ones marked RS-15.
Within that total yellow strip, I'm talking about 24 lots.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
We're on the same page.
Something that I want to also point out, on that RS-15, that's not incorporated in this development, are two apartment buildings, and they were built in the county, we annexed them, and they already existed. They're on the front part of the property, and you can see them in the area photographs, I think, on one of them, yes, on page six. Those preexisted the city's annexation of the property.
Town and country apartments?
The back part of that property is undeveloped, it's under a different ownership, and we don't know what trajectory it would take. I do expect someday we'll see some sort of plan for it. I don't know what form it will take, I've not had a conversation with anybody about
Ms. Ada Lot, let me ask you one more question, and you may have addressed it, and I may have missed it. There was a question about drainage, the drainage that, and we mentioned about this detention area, the buffer. So you feel confident that the entire drainage issues, there would be no impact upon them, or no additional impact upon the homeowners there, they'll all be contained within the site, is that...
Yes, sir, I believe that would be the case. With our new stormwater regulations, we basically require that a developer retain on his site, or detain on his site, 48 hours of additional storm drainage. So whatever's coming through there now would be able to continue to go through there, but any additional water from the additional asphalt would be required to be retained, let out slowly over the next several days. The new stormwater regulations are changing the way we look at volumes of water. We've got to make it clean, discharge the site, and we've got to hold it so it doesn't erode the ditches in the process of going to the creeks.
Mr. Vice Mayor, may I ask Ms. Ada Lot a question?
Ms. Young?
I'm looking at the aerial map on page six. Across the street is a apartment complex. Is that, am I reading this correctly?
Yes, sir, across St. Andrews.
Across St. Andrews, going east?
Yes, across St. Andrews is an apartment complex, and also immediately south of this property is another complex.
Okay, now, the RM-16, the apartment complex, backs up to Lehigh Drive?
Yes, sir.
And that's passed through our process several years ago, and it is buffered?
Actually, it's buffered, but I believe that the buffer complement that this plan has is more comprehensive. I would say that whatever you see on the complexes that exist out there, that the buffer that's incorporated in this plan will be superior, and will be, well, they're just a better type of landscaping, because we've upgraded our requirements since the time those were developed.
Ms. Ada Lot, I'm looking at the aerial map again on page six. And across the street, on the north end of this, is a large Commercial Highway development. What is that?
Across the street and to the north?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about across Coles?
Is that Coles?
It's Coles, yes.
That's Coles, okay. So the point I want to make, and I'm sure they won't agree with me, but the apartment complex is buffering between the Commercial Highway and the RM apartment zone to the residential zone?
Yes, sir, it very much is.
Is that not good long-term plan?
Yes, sir, I think that we have experienced in our community, a realization, and not most do, that heavy commercial, like your department stores, your commercial nodes around interchanges, you will experience a transition with multifamily, in many instances, between them and the single family. But you don't see single family right up to the grocery store. You do see it in some instances, but bearing in mind, this is a regional commercial area. This is more than just a neighborhood commercial shopping center. This is regional in nature. It has a big draw, and it also has a lot of out-of-town traffic associated with it, because it's proximity to the interstate. And generally, you don't, we don't want to see single family right up to the back of a Coles, or a grocery store, because the loading docks, they usually would be a little more of a nuisance to them. So we do often want to encourage these type of transitions in land uses.
Now, the northern end of this property is already zoned Commercial Highway. No, it was zoned, it was zoned Commercial Highway tonight?
That's correct. Part of it was already zoned Commercial Local, and we took action, you took action, to rezone it on first reading to Commercial Highway, just a little bit over an acre, about an acre and a half. And that's consistent with the zone on both sides of it and to the north.
Thank you, Ms. Ada Lot.
Vice Mayor, council members, this is the hardest thing that we have to do, is to look at projects that affect people's homes and their lives. Mr. Washington made a good point, this is about a mile from I-24. You have a large commercial shopping center to the left of this project. You have Commercial Highway on the north side of this project. And to the south, you have some residential homes, where people live and have their lives. Knowing what can happen on the north of the residential area that's already zoned Commercial Highway, and knowing that the southern end of this was already zoned Commercial Fringe, the apartments make some sense. They can give you some buffering between these areas. Now, I know you're not going to agree with me, but a plan that you're looking at tonight will be what will be built. As opposed to what might be built on Commercial Fringe, and what will be built at the Commercial Highway on the north end. That's going to happen anyway, because that's been zoned that way for years. It's hard, but sometimes you have to look at the big picture across from the interstate all the way over. You're on a major highway, Old Fort Parkway, you've got a major collector, St. Andrews Drive that goes through here. There is some traffic problems, but there's always traffic problems with residential and commercial and major highways coming together. This is a tough call. We looked at this twice in the planning commission, we had two separate hearings on this. I don't know where the neighborhood was, or if they missed it, or whatever. But we've studied this for four months, six months, so this is not new to us, we've looked at it a lot. And I think that you, as a neighbor, I, as a neighbor, and my son lives on Ross Common, if you know where Ross Common is, right down the street. I think you'll be better off with this apartment complex, knowing what you're getting, than what could possibly be put in here with this Commercial Fringe that's going to back up to every house on Lehigh and Haverford. So with that, Vice Mayor, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or comments before we call the robe? Call the robe, Miss Rock?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McCarlin?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bradger?
Aye. Next, pursuant to Resolution 10-O-R-09, adopted by the City Council on April the 15th, 2010, we're to conduct a public hearing to consider a zoning ordinance amendment to Appendix A zoning, Section 24, Article 4, H1. Historic districts pertaining to the consideration of changes to public property, notice of the said public hearing was published in the April the 25th, 2010 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely?
Thank you very much. This next public hearing is to consider amending the Murfreesboro zoning ordinance, Section 24, Article 4, which deals with the H1 district, which is our historic district. The legal department and planning staff have drafted some amendments, which are included in your agenda materials. These amendments were drafted in response to requests by the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission to have more input on matters involving the appearance, there doesn't need to be a map on the screen, but the Historic Zoning Commission would like to have more input on matters involving the appearance of public property that's located within Murfreesboro's East Main Street historic zone. This request was prompted after the city replaced some existing brick sidewalks with concrete sidewalks. You have a draft ordinance, which the public hearing will be on tonight. Essentially, it says that before the city of Murfreesboro sets a shovel in the ground to make any changes, removal, alteration, or demolition of any public or utility improvements, infrastructures, or objects, including landscaping, that the Historic Zoning Commission will have an opportunity to review and provide written comments on such proposed actions prior to initiation, and that initiation would be prior to putting the shovel in the ground. Mr. Ives worked extensively on drafting these comments, or these proposed amendments, if you have any questions, I think that he'll be able to answer. if you have any questions, I think that he'll be able to answer them, or I'll be glad to answer them, either before or after the public hearing. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this amendment to the Murfreesboro zoning ordinance, and so if you need anything from me at this time, I'll be able to answer them.
Are there any questions to Ms. Ely or Mr. Ives before we open the public hearing? I think Mr. Gilli has one.
I do, thank you, Vice Mayor. Margaret, if I understand this correctly, this is allowing a provision for the Historic Zoning Commission to be able to provide comment, it is not requiring approval process through the Historic Zoning Commission, it's notifying them, allowing them to provide input, but it's not adding another layer to the approval process?
That's absolutely correct, Mr. Gilli. I think Ms. McGannon may want to say something as well. No, okay. That's absolutely correct.
She's not in agreement with you, so.
You want to make any comments, Ms. McGannon?
Not unless I disagree.
Any other questions to Ms. Ely or Mr. Ives or Ms. McGannon, before we open the public hearing? This time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone here wishing to speak for or against, if you would please come to the podium, give us your name and address.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Bratcher and members of the council, my name is David Becker. I live at 346 East Main Street, and I'm also a member of the Main Street Historic Commission, and obviously, I am in favor of this resolution, but I would add, one other thing is that there's an emergency situation and the city has the right to go ahead with that work without input from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Are there others wishing to speak for or against? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Consider for passage on first reading, ordinance to amend Appendix A zoning, Section 24, Article 4, HI-H1 historic district pertaining to consideration of changes to public property.
Question. Ms. McGannon, is the right of emergency repair in this, or is it assumed, or is it-
If you look in the first line, the context is in any non-emergency situation, so it's only applicable when you're in a non-emergency situation.
So if a water line breaks, we can fix it?
Right, and in addition, if you look at the last part of it, when we're talking about a water line, that would be something below the surface of a public street, and it's not implicated in that instance either.
And that's what Mr. Becker referred to, I believe.
Yes, it's been very closely involved in this development.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. McFarland?
I was just going to say, after, you know, serving on the Historical Zoning Commission, that there's a lot of valuable input from that commission, so I see this as a way that we're, as a city, communicating better with not only our residents, but our different commissions and boards, and I only see that as improving, so with that, I move for approval.
Second. Motion and second. Colerobus Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Next, consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings. Welcome, Mr. Adele. You have several, I'll let you go through those.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bratcher and members of the council. During its regular meeting on May 5th of 2010, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission considered and recommended for approval the following matters, all of which will need to be scheduled for public hearings. The first is a zoning change request to rezone approximately three acres from RS-15 to Commercial Fringe located along Franklin Road and at Moreland Lane. The second is a zoning change request to rezone 51.9 acres from PUD to PRD, and amend the Blackman Farms PRD to include the subject property located along Franklin Road and south of Braxton Drag Drive. The third is a zoning ordinance amendment to amend Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A, Chart 1, uses, and this has to do with the OGR and OG districts. The fourth is a zoning change request, which is called Area 1, to rezone approximately 51.8 acres, including 32 parcels from CMR to OGR, located south of East Clark Boulevard and along Dow Street, Highland Terrace, and North Highland Avenue. The fifth is a zoning change request for Area 2, to rezone approximately 5.2 acres total, including three parcels from CMRS8 to OGR, and 13 parcels from CM to OGR, located west of North Highland Avenue and south of Robert Street. And the final request is a zoning change request, which we call Area 3, to rezone approximately 8.5 acres, including 29 parcels from CMR to OGR, located west of North Highland Avenue and along Lee Street, North Mania Avenue, Bell Street, and East Burton Street. I would add that these really did not take very long, the Planning Commission, although we had quite a number, it did not really take a lot of time. Actually, we had considerable support for those items.
Thank you, Ms. McGannon, do you recommend a date?
I do, Vice Mayor, I would suggest June 17th.
June 17th.
Mr. Adele, by then, will you be able to have an update, perhaps, you or Margaret on the T-room investigation that we asked you to make at Planning Commission level?
Mr. Gilli, next week, we're going to have a report, we're not really ready to make a recommendation, we really not have as much time to pursue a report because I think it involves more than just the OGR zone in my mind.
Sure.
But we're going to have a brief report and show you the direction we're going.
But that's a work in progress.
Yes, sir, it is a work in progress, and we're headed that way.
All right, great, thank you, sir.
June 17th.
So moved.
Second. Colerobus Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Adele. Next, consider for adoption of Resolution 10-R-12 approving Chapter 54 of the Private Acts of 2010 regarding the Office of Treasurer and Warrants. Ms. McGannon?
Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the council, you recall that you previously asked the General Assembly to change the city's charter to allow the offices of City Treasurer and City Recorder to be held by the same person, and to change whose signatures were required on warrants. The General Assembly has now acted, and the governor has signed what has become Private Chapter Number 54. Under the terms of private chapters, they do not become law unless by a two-thirds vote the City Council then approves and requests that that occur. And so before you tonight, is this resolution approving Chapter 54 of the Private Acts of 2010 to accomplish those two changes relative to the Office of City Treasurer? And once, assuming you approve it, we will send a certification into the state, when the state sends acknowledgement that they have received the certification, that it is now fully effective as an amendment to our charter, then the issue will come back to you for the council to decide what it wants to do about the Office of City Treasurer.
So tonight, we're just going to approve this resolution without making a decision on how that office is, are those two officers going to merge, or who's going to do it, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Any questions to Ms. McGannon or the staff? I will entertain a motion.
Vice Mayor, I move, we adopt the resolution.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Colerobus Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Next, will you consider any beer permit applications, Ms. Wright?
I don't have any tonight.
All righty. Next, we're going to consider the pavement of statements, and you have a new list of statements that's placed on your desk tonight. Does anyone want to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay the statements. Colerobus Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
I don't see any boards or commission appointments, so is there any other business come before the staff or the city council? Seeing none? We adjourn.